Call the Crystal City Council meeting to order. Let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Kamish.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser is absent. Councilmember Onessa Rosen.
Here.
Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Here.
Councilmember Cummings.
Here.
Councilmember Idbo.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda before us, looking for a motion to approve that agenda. Go ahead, John.
So moved.
All right, looking for a second. David?
I will second that.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. All right, we have a couple proclamations. As tradition, I'll read these into the record. First proclamation is recognition of Flag Day for 2023, whereas on June 14th, 1777, Second Continental Congress passed a resolution calling for the design of our nation's flag and christening our flag's icon stripes stars in field of blue. And whereas on May 30th, 1916, a presidential proclamation was issued suggesting and requesting that throughout the nation, and if possible, in every community, the 14th day of June be observed as Flag Day with specific patriotic exercises. And whereas on August 3rd, 1949, Congress approved the national observance of Flag Day and President Truman signed into law. Whereas, and whereas, we celebrate Flag Day across the United States on June 14th each year to honor the United States' flag and to commemorate the flag's adoption. This is a day set aside for Americans in Crystal residents to reflect on the foundations of the nation's freedom. And whereas, while the American flag has gone through many changes over the centuries, it has seen many battles and earned many tears, scars, and tatters. It remains a symbol of hope, an enduring symbol for the country's ideals since its early days. And whereas, the flag of the United States represents freedom, and when we honor our flag, we honor what it stands for as our nation and a community of freedom, equity, justice, and hope. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim that June 14th, 2023 is recognized as Flag Day, and I encourage the residents of Crystal to honor this day and proudly display the American flag at their homes and businesses and redirecting themselves to the ideals for which the flag stands dated the 6th day of June 2023. Our second proclamation for the day is recognizing Juneteenth, 2023, whereas a priority of Crystal City Council is making Crystal a welcoming and inclusive community. And whereas welcoming, or excuse me, recognizing Juneteenth and what it stands for is directly related to the city's effort to be a more welcoming and inclusive community. Whereas June 19th, a special, has a special meaning to Americans called Juneteenth, combining the words June and 19th, and has been celebrated by Americans over 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth is the oldest national celebrated commemoration of ending slavery in the United States, it has been celebrated under many names, including Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Second Independence Day, and the Emancipation Proclamation. And, excuse me, Emancipation Proclamation Day. And whereas, the Emancipation Proclamation was issued on January 1st, 1863. However, notice of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was not received in Gulfston, Texas until Union General Gordon Granger traveled to announce the general order on June 19th, 1865. And whereas Juneteenth became a federal holiday on June 17, 2021, and in 2023, Minnesota's 93rd Legislature formally established Juneteenth as a state-recognized holiday. And whereas, our African-American residents, freedom, contributions, achievements are acknowledged as part of our American history. Now therefore, I, Jim Adams, Mayor of Crystal, do hereby proclaim June 19th is recognized as Juneteenth Freedom Day in Crystal, and the history, contributions, and achievements of African-Americans in Crystal and the U.S. are recognized dated the 6th day of June Next item is our consent agenda. Read those into the record at this time. Approval of the minutes from the council meeting from May 11th, 2023. I'm sorry, that's a work session. And then work session from May 16th, 2023, and a council meeting on that same date. Approval of the list of license applications submitted to the city council. That list is on file in the city clerk's office. Adoption of a resolution accepting donations. We have donation boxes for Crystal K-9 Unit $550, Freddie Lyons Club for Crystal Airport Open House for $500, Gerald Haas for General Park Fund for $25, and Irwin and Susan Heizer for the airport open house of $100. Adoption of a resolution reporting on state performance measures. Approval for the following items on the 2023 Crystal Frolics, a temporary closure of a portion of 60, excuse me, 46th Avenue North and 47th Avenue North from July 27th to 30th in 2023. That is for volunteer parking, fireworks display, waterball competition, that type of stuff that's being hosted by the West Metro Fire Rescue Relief Association. And then a permit for the fireworks display at Welcome Park, again, two nights, July 28th and 29th, 2023, submitted by Hollywood Fireotechnics, Inc. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on this consent agenda? Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, looking for a second?
So moved.
Go ahead, John. It's not Forrest first.
Oh my goodness, no way.
It's okay.
Wait to be called on, please. All right, we got a second with John. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak during open forum that you know of?
Do not, Mr. Mayor.
Open forum is an opportunity for citizens to address the council at this time. We give people an opportunity to speak for three minutes on whatever topic they wish to bring before us. Usually each topic's related or held to 10 minutes, and I just want to encourage you, if you ever want to have anything to say to the council, this is a great opportunity for you. So with nobody being here, we'll move forward and just make sure that invitation is continued. Our next item is a public hearing relating to a new on-sale liquor license for Tequila Town LLC, Tequila Town Authentic Mexican Cuisine and Bar located at 99 Willow Bend. Chrissy, are you taking that on?
I am, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This evening, Fabian and Moises Banco have applied for a new on-sale liquor license with the addition of sales on Sunday for Tequila Town Authentic Mexican Cuisine and Bar, Restaurant Bar Establishment, as you said, at 99 Willow Bend and Crystal Shopping Center in the former Alora location. The liquor license application materials have been reviewed, and a background check was completed by the police department. Notice of tonight's public hearing was published in the May 25th Sun Post as well as on Next Door. No correspondence has been received in regards to the proposed new license. The applicants anticipate an opening sometime in July after completing some interior renovations. They also intend to continue to provide outdoor food and beverage service on the enclosed patio area. The applicants are both here tonight to answer any questions that the council may have, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, council, have any questions for Chrissy? Seeing none. Could our applicants please step forward up here? So construction's on its way, reconstruction, or what are you guys up to?
So we're just doing remodel right now.
Okay.
We, it's undergoing, we're doing, you know, we've done the painting, the floor, and that's pretty much it, what we're doing, you know? We're working something in the kitchen to get the permits and everything going.
Sure.
But, yeah, it's, everything is going.
Will the look be much different?
It will be much different, yeah.
Much different, okay.
Cleaner, of course, everything newer, and it's more, it's gonna, it's gonna look nice, you know?
Right.
And the food, of course, is gonna be also better. Yeah, we have a lot of different dishes, you know, Mexican food, so we're planning to do a barrier of a lot of food, you know?
Yeah.
So we're gonna try to do our best to give a good service and good food for our customers and good drinks.
Right. Well, looking forward to it. I was kind of sad to see that Alora went away, but I'm nice, I'm, I was ecstatic to see that you guys are coming in.
Yeah, we took over and.
Making it happen.
Yeah, we're gonna make it happen, and I know a lot of it's gone, but we're gonna try to make it better, you know, than Alora.
All right. Any questions, anybody else? Yeah, go ahead, Forrest.
Oh my goodness.
Is this your first restaurant venture, or have you done others?
We have some other restaurants as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, we've been in the business for more than 20 years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, between him and me, he's my brother, you know, we brothers, so.
All right. Go ahead, John.
There was my question. Yeah, very good, yeah, I'm excited to have you there.
Yeah.
We know this isn't just for a liquor license, but we really want to know what's going on.
All right, we're gonna offer a discount for the city hall as well, our location, you know, so.
Yeah, I don't think that'll work.
That's something that we usually like to do, you know?
I think we'll show up anyway.
There you go.
All right. Don't have anything else, we're gonna move on to a vote. Thank you for stepping forward and talking with us.
Thank you.
All right. Looking for a motion on this, John?
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion to approve the on-sale liquor license for Tequila Town LLC, doing business as Tequila Town Authentic Mexican Cuisine and Bar located at 99 Willow Bend.
Looking for a second? Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have to say it?
Oh, open.
Just, just, so you know, appreciate the offer, but the city council, or the city can't, can't accept gifts like that, so thank you.
Right.
You can offer us a cup of coffee, right?
That's why I said we would come anyway. All right, I do have to do an open public hearing. We do have a motion in a second, but we're gonna do the open public hearing at this point in time. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this issue? Anyone wishing to speak on this issue? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing, that is over. We have a motion and a second on the floor. I'd like to call all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. Congratulations. One step closer. We look forward to hearing about your progress. All right. And you're welcome to leave, we won't be offended. Next is our disbursements of $25,000 or greater. I will read those into the record at this time. Min pair for employee and city required contributions for pay date 5/12/23, $66,628. The electronic payments for the IRS for federal and FICA withholding for the same pay date is $65,424. Northdale Construction Company for utility reconstruction, that's for 2023, $34,999. Nettie Sanitation for annual HGR curbside cleanup, that event for the, for the city residents is $360,712. Met Council Waterway Services for June, $138,936. Short Elliott and Hendrickson SEH for 2022, 2023. Reconstruction projects is $28,162. Again, IRS electronic payments for FICA and federal taxes, pay date 5/26, is $66,903. Total disbursements of $25,000 or greater is $761,766 and 26 cents. Council, any questions on any one of these items? Go ahead.
Can someone say more about this curbside cleanup? I just don't know what that is and why it's so expensive.
Great.
So it's a very popular event where we are able to put a lot of different items to curb, and it's a time where people clean out their garages, their basements. It's not a normal refuse pickup, they usually pick up a lot of things that normally aren't collected by garbage. A lot of people think it's the thrift sale, the free thrift sale of the year. We see a lot of that happening, you know, before the garbage comes around. It's usually done in phases, and it's, you're right, it's a very expensive endeavor. Do you have anything to add on that?
No, that's, we have had some, some comments from the, at least one recently, a comment from a resident wishing that it was done more frequently, but because of the cost, it is, it's not something that we can, right?
So do certain parts of the city have this every other year?
No. It goes in phases throughout the city in the same year.
So is this available to all residents every year?
Every other year.
Every other year?
Yeah.
Okay. So I think, yeah, my part of the city doesn't have it this year, so, okay, that makes sense. I didn't, I thought it was like a whole city thing every other year.
It is a full city thing every other year.
Stages.
But it's in stages.
No, I think, I think what you're getting at is, why are we paying for an annual cleanup when it's every other year, right?
Is it an annual cleanup, or is it every other year?
Misnomer. By annual.
But we pay for it every year? Or is this for next year?
No, this is for this, this year.
2023.
Has it happened yet?
I thought it happened last year.
The most, the most recent one.
Yeah. So then it'll happen next year? Because it didn't.
This is what we've already.
That's my understanding.
This is paying for what we did last year.
The last one that was done.
This is paying for that?
Yes.
All right, so this is paying for last year?
Part of me going through the HRG, it, it takes a long time to go through that, and even just the regular recycling, there's months that go.
Perfect. All right, makes, that makes sense now.
I am so glad you guys remember my idea of time, I can't, it's been messed up for the last few years. All right, any more? Go ahead, John.
So do we have a date for the next schedule?
I will look on that and let the council know.
Now we know which resident was looking for it every year.
Yeah, sure, I'm piling it up there now.
All right. Any other questions related to these items? All right, looking for a motion? Go ahead, John.
I make a motion to approve the list of disbursements over $25,000.
All right, looking for a second, ready?
I'll second that.
All right, all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. Motion carries. All right. Our second item is our financial, comprehensive financial report.
All right, well, thank you for having me here tonight. Andy Greys from Bergen KDV here to present the audit results for the year ending December 31st, 2022. In your agenda packets, there are three documents, one being the annual comprehensive financial report, a report on compliance, and also our communications letter. In the annual comprehensive financial report, we have our independent auditor's report. That highlights what our role is as your auditor, as well as the role of management, in that these are management and the city's financial statements, and the preparation of those financial statements are management's responsibility. Our role as your auditor is to come in, test, examine, and look at the underlying documentation to support the numbers and disclosures in your financial statements, and ultimately give an opinion as to whether they're fairly stated in all material respects. Happy to report we are issuing a clean, unmodified opinion, and again, that does provide assurance to the city that they can be relied on for decision-making purposes. Next, wanted to cover some components of our compliance report, one being a report on Minnesota legal compliance. This report is required by the Office of the State Auditor, and we're required to report on the city's deposits and investments, conflicts of interest, contracts and bidding, claims and disbursements processes, and report any matters that come to our attention that cause us to believe that the city didn't comply with the statutes included in those state auditor legal compliance guides, and we had no compliance findings to report for this year. We also reported on the major federal program in accordance with the Uniform Guidance. The city expended about $2.6 million in federal awards this year. Whenever the city expends more than $750,000 or more in federal awards, it does trigger a single audit or a federal program audit, and that was related to the American Rescue Plan Funds. And so we had to take a look at whether the city complied with the compliance requirements associated with that program, as well as the internal controls to ensure compliance with that program, and we had no findings to report as a result of our test work. Last is a report on government auditing standards, and this report talks about our consideration of internal control over financial reporting required by auditing standards to review internal controls, understand them, and design audit procedures to address any risks of material misstatement. When we took a look at the processes and procedures that were in place, we just noted another finding similar to one that's been received in the past, and it's a lack of segregation of accounting duties, and that's at a significant deficiency level, that's a mid-level finding, the most severe would be a material weakness level, just meaning that there is some overlap in certain processes of the city, again, similar to what's been reported in prior years. Next, we have our communications letter, and that requires all other required communication required by audit standards, as well as our financial analysis, and that provides some trend data. And it starts with a look at the general fund and the fund balance. And the general fund balance at the end of the year was at about $6.5 million. That was a decrease of about 16% or a decrease of about $1.3 million. And $5.6 million of that is unassigned, $918,000 of that balance is committed for compensated absences, and about $35,000 is non-spendable. Now, that is the metric that we use when we're evaluating financial health. The city also has a policy in place to maintain a minimum unassigned fund balance compared to subsequent years expenditures between, excuse me, here, I think it's between, or equal to 45% of the general fund budget for that subsequent year. And 2023 budget did call for an increase in expenditures of about 6.1% or about $1 million. And we take a look at this chart here, we can see that that unassigned fund balance is below that policy, it's at 31%. The Office of the State Auditor recommends that fund balance be between 35 and 50%, so this is the first year where the city's unassigned fund balance is below the OSA recommendations. So, you know, for the five years presented, it is below the city's policy, and so we would recommend that the city councils continue to review that policy to make sure that continues to be appropriate, given where those levels are. Next, we'll take a look at the general fund budget to actual results, and this is a great way to highlight city council's responsibility as it relates to the financial statements, and that's adopting and monitoring the budget. And the budget called for about $16.6 million in revenue, $17.1 million in expenditures, and after other financing sources, expected no change in fund balance for the year. Actual revenues came in about 2.5% less than anticipated, or about $393,000 less than anticipated. The majority of that variance was in other sources of revenue there, coming in $322,000 less than anticipated, and that relates to fair market value adjustments related to investments. So accounting standards require that we recognize those changes in fair market value in the year, at, at the end of the year. And with market rates where they were, and the majority of the city's investments being fixed income securities, we did have to recognize those adjustments here for 2022. That was offset by intergovernmental revenues coming in better than anticipated by about $150,000. That related to police and fire state aids and some federal sources that weren't anticipated in the budget. And the taxes and assessments category was under budget by about $122,000 based on collections. On the expenditure side, expenditures came in over budget by about $882,000 or about 5%, majority of that occurring in public safety. And just with increasing costs, inflation, we are seeing some of these trends there. Being over budget, we're also seeing that, looking at prior year results, but public safety had various areas that were over budget related to salaries and benefits, vehicle repairs, maintenance, supplies, professional services, so various different components there contributing to that variance. Parking recreation was over budget by $209,000, over related to salaries, benefits, supplies, and utility costs, and then the other categories were fairly consistent with the prior year. Next is a presentation of general fund revenues over the last five years. And property taxes here is that green bar continues to make up the majority of general fund revenues at about 77%, followed by intergovernmental revenues. In 2022, there was an increase in revenue going from about $15.6 million up to the $16.2 million. Largest increase was in property taxes with an increase in levy, that increased about $436,000. Charges for services increased about $207,000, and that was additional police services provided and recreation program activity. Intergovernmental revenue increased about $130,000 with increased police and fire aid, and then the other category decreased by about $145,000, and again, that's where that related investment adjustments were. Next is to take a look at, here is the makeup of general fund expenditures and how those are allocated by government function here, and the most significant function that resources are allocated to is public safety, that expended about 51% of general fund expenditures here in 2022, almost identical to the prior year for most categories, just a little bit of a shift in parking recreation, increasing one percentage point. Next is a look at general fund expenditures here over the last five years, and here in 2022, expenditures increased about 8% or about $1.3 million. Again, public safety was a component of that, as well as general government with the same reasoning that we looked at there in the budget, as well as greater cost inflation, wages and benefits, and related supplies and maintenance. Next is a look at the city's enterprise funds, and these funds are designed to operate like a business, it should cover all operating costs and capital needs. The water utility fund this year had a net income of about $1.7 million. We also provide that figure without depreciation, as depreciation is a non-cash operating expense, and that, after excluding depreciation, a surplus of about $1.9 million, and that includes all non-operating revenues and expenses as well. There was an increase in operating revenue with an increase in rates, also an increase in operating expenses, and this is the highest in the operating income and net income in the five years presented. Next is a sanitary sewer utility fund, this one also experienced an increase in operating revenue with an increase in rates, also an increase in operating, or excuse me, a decrease in operating expenses, and that resulted in a net income of about $688,000 and without depreciation, surplus of about $865,000. We also provide this information for a store and drainage utility fund. This fund experienced a decrease in that income, going from $480,000 down to about $387,000, without depreciation, a surplus of about $150,000. And then the streetlights utility fund did have a deficit this year of about $25,000. Not a huge margin for error here if there's any one-time costs or irregular or variable costs from year to year, and there was an increase in operating expenses this year that contributed to that, and without depreciation, there was still a surplus of about $7,500. The next chart provides per capita revenues and expenditures, giving some prior year comparisons, as well as comparisons to other cities. And here in 2022, there was a decrease in the revenue per capita, there was more significant intergovernmental revenues last year as it related to state aid related to street projects, so that's why we're seeing a little bit of a decrease there. And then expenditure per capita increased, we did see an increase in expenditures, but there was a related, there was a decrease in population that also is contributing to that, and that's why we're also seeing total expenditures per capita increasing from 960 to 978. Last is a chart that shows tax capacity, the certified tax levy and tax rate. The certified tax levy increased about 5%, going from $12.8 million to about $13.5 million. However, the tax capacity increased at a greater rate, increasing from $23.6 million to about $25.6 million, and as a result, we did see a decrease in the city tax rate, going down to 46.3%, and that is the lowest in the five years presented. That's a high-level look at our audit reports and our communications letter, and just like to open it up for any questions.
Questions for Andy? Go ahead, Forrest.
I guess I have a question here, probably a question that somebody new to this role would ask, so forgive me.
No worries.
But looking at these. But looking at these enterprise funds, I mean, I'm looking at like the water utility, and just seeing the net income, as you know, continued to go up quite a bit. Is maybe, maybe Mr. Ray can maybe speak more to it, but are we like saving up for something? Or is it just building, making sure we have a big enough cushion to, if there's a bigger thing, or I'm just kind of curious about that?
Yeah, that typically is what's occurring. You know, depending on what the capital planning is related to infrastructure improvements, those are obviously, you know, very expensive. And I know it's important to the city to limit long-term debt. I think there's some internal fund financing opportunities that I think that are occurring there as well. But it would yet depend on what those infrastructure needs look like here in the future.
Actually, the biggest driver is the drought.
Oh, so more people are using water?
Using a lot. So when we project, it's based on a certain revenue, you throw three years of drought on there.
People are watering.
People are watering like crazy.
So it's more on the, there's just a lot more demand?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're pumping six, I think five or six million gallons a day already into our reservoir. Now granted, that goes into joint water commission, not just the city, but we are already moving a lot of water through the system.
So does, and the net income goes into that enterprise fund and kind of stays there, right?
It stays within the water generally.
And I was going to mention too, you know, looking at the equity position in that fund, you know, the unrestricted net position is at about $9.2 million. So that would be the amount that would be available for future capital needs and operations. But I believe there are some other components here in terms of internal loans that are occurring as well that need to be factored in. But that's where it is in terms of an equity standpoint.
Just so I understand it correctly, we're loaning money from the water fund to other funds, or what did you mean by that?
Correct. There's about a $900,000 advance to other funds. So you're utilizing some of those resources to finance projects in some other areas. But also to keep in mind, of that $9.2 million, $5.3 million is an equity interest in a joint venture that you don't have any cash for. So you have to factor that out. So really, there's about $4 million.
Did you just do that calculation right now?
I got, you know, this is your.
Oh, okay. You're doing math on the fly. Okay, thank you very much. Is, do you know, is that 9.2 million, is that like pretty average among other cities' water funds or?
I would say they vary. It varies.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Yeah, go ahead.
I guess I have another question that it sounds like maybe some of the more experienced people on council might know. But could you talk a little bit more about this lack of segregation of accounting duties?
Absolutely. So, you know, when we take a look at the city's internal controls, we're looking at, you know, whether they're designed in a way to segregate accounting duties. So that would mean that we have a, we just take, you know, maybe the expenditure process. That someone initiating that transaction, that's, you know, submitting the purchase requisition, that's different from the person that's recording that transaction. And that's different than the person that has custody of the related assets. And that's different than the person that is reporting the information to you. And so I don't think it actually relates to the accounts payable process. I think it's more on the cash receiving side, this particular issue, as it relates to some of the recreation programs. And, you know, areas where you may not have as many people involved in those related processes.
So it's more on the income side that there's that lack? Okay, not so much on the, okay.
Correct. And it's, and it's not as significant, you know, the dollars that are coming in in those areas. So that's why we don't have it at a material weakness level, that we don't anticipate that to result in any sort of material misstatement. And the city does have some compensating controls in place in terms of, you know, establishing a budget and expectations. Where would you expect those revenues to come in as a way to kind of monitor, you know, those revenue cycles?
Awesome. And then I have one other, one final question. Could you talk a little bit more about the balance, kind of the unobligated unassigned fund balance? And, you know, how now we're below the Office of the State Auditor's recommendation, kind of what the implications of that are? And just kind of expand out on that.
Sure. The Office of the State Auditor establishes those recommendations just based on the timing of tax payments coming in. So, you know, you get those, you know, two times a year, and you need to be able to have that fund balance in place for cash flow purposes, and also have that in place, you know, as a shock absorber for anything that, you know, unexpected that could occur. So I think that's where that, you know, that 35 to 50% comes into play. And, you know, from a policy standpoint, you know, obviously, that's, that's the role of city council is just to, you know, understand where the city feels most comfortable operating. You know, maybe it's going to fall within that OSA recommendation there. But, you know, I think it just needs to be reviewed and recognized in policy if that's not a target that is, you know, going to be factored in in that decision-making process any longer. So, you know, just looking at the budget, you know, the budget didn't, you know, call for any change in fund balance or any increase in fund balance. So just wanted to make sure that, you know, that's being considered as part of that process.
Okay. So looking forward, essentially, right now, we're, we're seeing us expending more than we're bringing in versus previous years.
Correct. And we'd have to be generating surpluses in order to get that back up to that minimum fund balance level.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
So real briefly, I'd like to talk on that. We've been on a decline, you can see, for a couple of years. This is something that I'm really hoping that we can address as a council to, rather than lower our standards down, is to try to focus and get that back up to the 45. I think when I started, we were at 50%, which is a very high level standard. And we did, as a council, bring it down to 45. And it seems like since we've done that, it's been just being dropped more and more. I'd like for us, you know, as a council, to kind of, kind of push for bringing that back up to the level that we brought it down to, the 45 level a couple of years ago, as our policy. This is something that, it's something that, if we're, if we're not playing game. Well, no, I'm not going to say that. That's not, that's not fair. We just, we just need to do our budget in a way where we're a little bit more accurate. So we don't have these types of overages in our budget. So we've got to be a little bit more careful in how we, how we operate within that budget process.
And one thing to consider too, you know, the policy is currently written to meet a specific target. And some other cities, you know, build in a range, you know, that maybe it's 40, you know, to 45%. And so you have a little bit more, you know, of a cushion to know, okay, we're at the higher end or at the lower end. So just something to consider as part of those discussions as well.
It, and just to kind of wrap that up, I think my preference and comfort level, my range is above 45. So, anything else? Andy, thanks for your time.
Oh, thanks for having me. Very good presentation. Thank you.
All right. There you are. Mark Ray is here to talk.
Make a motion to approve the.
Oh, accept the, yeah, yeah, yeah. Looking for a motion to accept the financial report? John, go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the 2022 annual financial report from Bergen KDV.
All right. Thank you. Looking for a second? Go ahead.
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. All right. Next is conversation about the GIS support system. We have our Public Works Director, Mark Ray, to talk briefly on that. So welcome, Mark.
Sure. Good evening again. I think just kind of rolling off what the auditor said. Obviously, our enterprise funds are a very large part of our operation, impact every single resident and every single property every day. And so we see this, this partnership with Logis is really helping us provide better service, not only in how we deliver our service, but in support of information to our residents, whether it be access to the Logis tools, some of their pre-built ones, access to information we already have, data housing, management, security, and also a big part of that is providing support to Emily. Because as she indicated, you know, with one person, while I think we've been successful, we are not where we could and debatably should be compared to some of our peers. And so we see this as a, as a kind of a step forward, just collectively, in a number of ways, support for staff and support for our operators, as well as providing information to residents. So with that, I have nothing further. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Mark? Yeah, go ahead.
Mark, how soon do you think residents would be able to kind of interact with the tool? I think I'm most interested in that, but what's kind of the time horizon for that?
Emily, I'll bring you up for this one. I think it depends on a lot of that data migration and integration with some of the Logis stuff, correct? For a timeline for.
Yes. Yes, correct. I mean, you can definitely arrange. It depends on how we want to curate our application as well, what tools we want to include.
So Logis does have some pre-built stuff I think we could roll out, I'll say, before the end of the year. But some of that more in-depth stuff, for example, access to the plat maps, I see that being a little bit longer. But I really, I think this is where we look to lean on some of Logis' experience to help us make that data transition and then use some of the existing tools to deliver that to our residents.
I think, yeah, that's all. I think if we do go this route, I would just want to, to whatever extent we can, expedite the opportunity for our residents to use the tool and get some benefit out of it.
Yeah, I think one of the most exciting things for me when I go to the website is there's a lot of information in a lot of different spots. And I think if we could use maps to communicate that and to link, I think that's what excites me most about the public outreach effort.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Looking for a motion on this item then? Anyone?
I can make.
Anyone?
I can make.
John, go ahead.
Make a motion to adopt the following resolution authorizing professional services for Logis GIS support.
All right. Thank you, John. Looking for a second? David?
I will second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay?
Nay.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kamish.
Aye.
Councilmember Vanessa Rosen.
Aye.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Budashevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Aye.
Councilmember Idbo.
Nay.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you for your work on that. Appreciate it. Emily, welcome. Appreciate you. Thank you. That's our last item for our regular agenda. We do have some announcements, however. I'll read those into the agenda at this time. There will be a ribbon cutting at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 15th, to celebrate the opening of the new Crystal Vision Center. That's at 5730 Botno Boulevard. We have open house at the airport, and that is on June 18th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Crystal Airport. I think our waffles are coming back.
Waffles there, plane, helicopter rides, plane rides, cars, displays.
EMT, veterans, fire, police, all kinds.
Any vendors other than that?
Oh, I think there's, there should be a bouncy house for kids. There's, I believe, four food trucks slated to come, and then flyover is at noon.
Sweet.
Very good. Reminder that city offices will be closed on June 19th in operation, or in observation of Juneteenth that holiday. And then next council meeting is Tuesday, June 20th at 7:00 p.m. here at City Hall. There will be a ribbon cutting on June 22nd to celebrate the opening of ADAM Medical at 6014 Lakeland Avenue North. And then there will be a community open house at Bass Lake Road Station area plan update for, from 7:00 to 5:00 p.m. on Thursday, June 22nd. That's at the Crystal Community Center. One thing, tomorrow night, June 7th, there is a ribbon cutting for the pickleball courts at Becker Park. I'm hoping that council members will take this opportunity to pick up a paddle and see if they can swing a few. We have, we're going to do ribbon cutting at 6:00. And then there's an event where you can try to play pickleball, hit it around, whatever. There's going to be some, some people, our local expert, John Lee, is going to be there with some of the other volunteers from Crystal. And they will kind of help guide you through if you just want to hit it back and forth a few times. If you want to learn a little bit more about the rules, there'll, there'll be other people there to help you with that as well. I figured that would be a good opportunity for you guys to step in at no risk if you wanted. I'll be there too if there's a bunch of people, if there's a bunch of people who are looking for guidance. I'm kind of the backup. My wife and I will step in and if it's needed and do some coaching there. There's also, the inclusion and diversity is doing a 7 o'clock meeting, I believe. And I think the neighbor. Is it 6:30?
6:30, yeah.
6:30? Thank you for the clarification. And then we're also doing a neighborhood meeting at 7:00 p.m. Is it 7:30?
7:30, I think, isn't it?
I thought it was 7:30 too.
7:40.
7:45 even sounds.
I think it's after the neighborhood meeting, so there's a little bit of flux. Kind of depends on the neighborhood meeting.
It's at Becker.
Right, it's at Becker. Really, I mean, come on, it's a, you can spend the whole night there.
Yeah.
Right?
Might as well.
And if, and if you're not interested in the other things, I'm sure pickleball will be going on all night.
Yeah.
I went last Wednesday, which is comparable to the night of this, and we had probably 25 people waiting to get on and rotating through. Just people showed up. It's the first time I've seen it that busy, just people showing up. So it's, it's been, it's been, it's been a success. So great to see that. Just a reminder that meetings and work sessions are open to the public, and current and previous meetings are available for viewing or listening on our website at crystalmen.gov. Any other announcements from council?
Adam has one.
I just had one, one question, or I guess it's been put from the council. With the July 4th holiday on Tuesday, this year, the Monday would be the July 3rd. And the talking to staff, a lot of the, majority of the vast majority of staff is taking that Monday off. It has been asked or inquired if the city council would be okay with closing City Hall and not adding it as a holiday, but allowing either people to work with, if they don't take the time or use benefit time for that day.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can we just add that to our work session here and have that discussion at that time? As a part of.
Yeah, it's not, it's not going to be a vote.
Yeah.
I'm good with that. Are you good with that?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Fair enough. Anybody wishing to adjourn?
Yeah, me.
Okay.
So moved.
Looking for a second. Go ahead, David.
I'll second that.
All right. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. Motion carries. All right. If you don't mind, we're going to roll right back into the work.